custodian of this land and pay my respect those of the committee members here those of our witnesses to the elders past present and emerging and extend that respect to other Aboriginal peoples present today we will hear evidence from peak bodies industry associations and venue operators of the live music arts and nighttime economy gaining important insights into what's happening on the ground as the pandemic continues to evolve as does the government's response today's hearing is being broadcast live via the parliament's website the transcript of today's hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available I'd also remind media representatives to take responsibility for what they publish about the committee's proceedings it's important to remember that parliamentary privilege does not apply to what witnesses may say outside of their evidence at the hearing so I urge witnesses to be careful about any comments that may make to the media or to the others after they complete their evidence as such comments would not be protected by parliamentary privilege if another person decided to bring an action for defamation the guidelines for the broadcast of proceedings are available from the secretariat all witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the house in 2018 there may be some questions that a witness can only answer if they had more time or with certain documents to hand in these circumstances witnesses witnesses are advised that they may take a question on notice and provide an answer within 21 days I remind everyone here today that committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum to make adverse reflections upon others under the protection of parliamentary privilege I therefore request that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry terms of references by the inquiries terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessary I now welcome our first witnesses our first two witnesses James Hume the director of advocacy the committee for Sydney who is having some small well who we are having some small technical difficulties getting online and we will swear James on in as soon as he comes online but we also have councillor Linda Scott the president of the local government New South Wales who is living the al fresco life at the at the top of the MCA councillor would you mind please take in either an oath or an affirmation
thanks Chair I solemnly sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth the whole truth and nothing but the truth
thanks very much did you have a brief opening statement that you wish to give to the committee
I do thank you I do thank the committee for giving me the opportunity to speak at the hearing today and also like you acknowledge that I'm coming to you today from Gadigal land on Eora territory and pay my respects to their elders past present and emerging I am coming to you from the top of the MCA because I am also participating in the government's summer summit today to talk about how best to handle and kickstart our state's economy so thank you for being able to hear from me remotely and obviously I appear in my capacity as a president of local government New South Wales councils are working very hard to lead a locally led economic recovery from bushfires floods droughts and now of course covid we recognise let's lead recovery we know that 75% of small and medium cultural institutions have local governments as their primary source of funding councils own and manage the public space where potentially more live activations and events can occur and they also stimulate the nighttime economy via planning provisions such as trading hours and zoning councils have done an extraordinary job to step up and assist local businesses cultural organisations and artists with grants right across the state from quick response grants for example in Wollongong through to Parramatta Cities Council's grants programme to support cultural and creative entrepreneurs as part of their $785,000 package providing this assistance though has been more difficult for local government in light of the federal government's decision not to provide councils access to Jobkeeper and not to allow councils a seat at the national cabinet table we welcome the state government's $395 million stimulus package for local governments in April and of course their recent announcement about access to arts and cultural funding yet we still see the work in the cultural space that councils do in need of support for example the Walgar Civic Theatre has had to refund almost 7,000 tickets and cancelled dozens of performances they've had no theatre hires since March and as you can imagine this has led to a jobs loss of more than 20 casual staff as well as a huge income loss the theatre was able to reopen for performances in August the council spent enormous resources developing covid safe reopening plans but only able to host around a third of its usual capacity of 500 people we know and welcome that the New South Wales government would like to work with councils on the Sydney 24 hour economy strategy and we'd like to see the strategy extended to become statewide because we know that as well as Sydney's fabulous nighttime economy we want to have a nighttime economy across the state to remind involvement in the music festival roundtable we've called for regulatory requirements for festivals to be mapped to identify gaps and overlaps and how we can work better with our outdoor spaces that councils own to ensure they're activated with cultural events and we've previously supported many of the sensible proposals put forward by the New South Wales government in its draft liquor amendment 24 hour economy bill we particularly support removing outdated licence conditions on entertainment and in these clear cut cases where we can support live music and the cultural life of our communities without adverse acts and amenity we should act quickly we know that state and federal governments have released as I said creative recovery packages but they've had limited eligibility and in many cases come very late the per capita investment by councils in art culture and creative industries has increased by 11% in the last decade this contrasts to an increase by only 4% from state governments and a decrease by the federal government of 19% in post pandemic recovery it is absolutely vital that state and federal governments create a much better investment in local governments to restore cultural activities and the vibrancy they bring to communities and Chair I'd just like to end with a quick note on outdoor dining outdoor green spaces and performance spaces we've seen a great initiative this week from the Victorian government an $87.5 million package for councils and businesses to make widespread outdoor dining safe practical and reality this includes nearly $30 million for councils to implement swift and streamlined permits enforcement and monitoring we'd like to see a package of $100 million from the New South Wales government so that councils can undertake similar work to ensure our open spaces are utilised safely cleanly for the public good as our summer approaches thanks very much
thanks very much I'm now just going to check if James can hear us James
I can yeah and apologies for the technical difficulties I hope you can hear me okay
yep you're coming through nice and clear Linda can you hear James
sorry I can hear you fairly well you're still a bit faint you might need to just talk a little bit closer to the microphone
no worries well we'll all speak up James would you mind giving either an oath or an affirmation the words of which should have been provided to you by the secretariat
yeah by all means I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth the whole truth and nothing but the truth so help me God
thanks very much and so on behalf of the committee for Sydney did you want to give a brief opening James
I do and thanks very much for the opportunity to give evidence to this important inquiry so my name's James Hume I'm speaking today on behalf of the committee for Sydney we are a urban policy think tank that represents over 150 major organisations across Sydney I should also declare that I'm a board member of the Nighttime Industries Association but today will be speaking on behalf of the committee for Sydney the covid-19 pandemic has tested every level of government in most if not all countries around the world and in unprecedented circumstances of both a global health crisis and a global economic crisis it is unlikely that any government is able to say that it's got every decision right or that it would not change some decisions in hindsight that said the response to covid-19 generally by New South Wales government can be commended on many fronts there has been strong clear leadership and the mindfulness to balance economic and health interests appropriately and in particular a desire to keep as much of the economy open as possible whilst reducing the risk of infection which has been a tough but correct decision and it's worth noting that their response the government's response has had the support of many of our members earlier this month we published our 2020 leadership survey of our membership which found that 85% are satisfied with the New South Wales government's handling of the health crisis and 70% satisfied with its handling of the economic crisis this inquiry focuses on live music arts and the nighttime economy all areas that have been severely impacted by the pandemic there has been support for these sectors from all three levels of government but there is always more that can be done to protect those industries that bring so much benefit to the New South Wales economy to our brands and the image and our collective cultural fabric we know that many operators in this sector have been are only kept afloat at the moment by Jobkeeper and face an enormously difficult future there has been welcome action support from New South Wales governments but there is also scope to do more and I'm happy to expand on some of those options during the session thanks very much
thanks James I'll now hand over to John Graham to keep questioning off
great thank you Chair and thanks for those opening statements they're both very useful I might turn first to the question of outdoors because that is crucial in other cities around the world to allow people to socially distance spread out during the pandemic Linda you're coming to us from the summer summit where that outdoor dining is under consideration but you've touched on outdoor performance as well that's really that hasn't been discussed so much publicly that's also crucial isn't it to be able to actually spread out for outdoor performance have you got a view on that question
yeah very much so and
well it's okay we'll go first to Linda and then to you James that's okay
thanks for the question it absolutely is crucial we know for example in the from you know research on the Australian Music Industry Network 25,000 workers lost employment and income opportunities more than $11 million within the first week of the government restrictions on public travelling public gatherings so we know you know this industry is absolutely vital and there's an enormous amount of job growth that can be seen if we get this industry back on its feet and we know that one of the best ways to do that is through outdoor performances and we've written to the Premier and to Minister Rob Stokes to ask for two things with respect to supporting this whether it's open spaces on our beaches or open spaces on our green spaces generally and that is first of all a strong united public education campaign to help people understand what we all need to do to keep our open spaces open at this summer as we move into the summer season and secondly to provide some funding for councils for covid based marshals to help with the enforcement of social distancing that we know is so vital to keeping these public spaces open we think those steps will enable councils to better open up beaches green spaces parks and civic squares to enable performances outdoor dining and people to move around more freely and this is going to be vital to ensure that we can get industries like the music industry the performance industry up on its feet and also it's going to be vital to keep us all safe from covid and we see numerous overseas examples of great outdoor performances we've got the best city in Sydney you know the world the best harbour in the world what a backdrop for some stunning outdoor performances that would be if we can pull off this outcome
James
yeah I'd absolutely echo many of the comments from councillor Scott one thing that we you know have really seen during the pandemic has been a reappraisal of the importance of of outdoor and open and public space not just to exercise and to congregate but to put on activities that normally you might put on indoors we're very supportive of the idea of utilising open and public space for some of the announcements that have made this put on live music and other live performance I suppose one thing we've noted from a committee perspective is that the councils have played a leading role in this in this agenda and for the moment state government seems very responsive to working collaboratively with councils which is really encouraging but it is for this to work it does require active collaboration between states and local government and some funding to be brought to the table so we've seen globally
I might just stop you there I do I'm just conscious there's a range of committee questions can I just ask you this question local governments called for a $100 million package to allow widespread outdoor dining that's modelled on Victoria in addition Victoria's provided specific funding $15 million to venues to keep them open it appeared when the government announced its nighttime economy strategy at the start of the week which had a range of very welcome measures a lot of very positive measures but it appeared there was zero funding do you regard this as something that does need funding to actually make this happen
um yeah happy to answer that and I think the short answer is is yes always yes funding is always very helpful for initiatives I do note the comments of the New South Wales Treasurer this morning where he encouraged ideas including applications for funding for things like outdoor dining obviously there are a huge number of asks on the state budget at the moment but certainly you know we would be very encouraged if the government was to come forward with some funding some additional resources for the nighttime economy in general but particularly for this window of opportunity for outdoor activities over the next six months
Ms Kay Fairman
thank you Chair thanks both for appearing today and for the work you're doing continue to do in this space I just wanted to get a sense looking at the nighttime economy strategy and the as you're suggesting the outdoor task force and things that the government has talked about this week again all very welcome as my colleague John Graham has just said is do you think the pace of the pace that the government is working on at the moment in terms of getting this ready for what is already looks like it's going to be a warm summer people are very keen to continue to be eating out I know that the restaurants people can't get tables at restaurants as it is from what I'm hearing is the pace of change enough and what actually I'll start I'll let you answer that I've got one more question in relation to this so is do you think things will be in place for outdoor dining rooftop dining you know by Christmas are you hopeful that this is going to happen
I'll go Linda then James
thanks for the question Kate I think there's absolutely time for this to happen of course we would have preferred that some of the support from the New South Wales government came a little bit earlier because we know and as I indicated you know theatres in regional areas like Walgar and in metropolitan areas have seen such a sharp downturn since the closures in March nevertheless always opportunity to turn this around and create the jobs that we know can come from that and we've established the nighttime economy councils committee that happened in 2016 so we've been working on these issues as a group of councils for a very long time and very engaged in creating a sort of you know nighttime economy but more generally an outdoor economy that can be resilient to the kinds of forces we're seeing from covid so there is enough time but there is enough space but the funding is what will convert this and for example enabling support for councils to quickly generate new planning controls seeing those once approved by councils facilitated quickly through the Department of Planning as they often have to be approved through as well if we all work together we know that the strength of that relationship between the state government and councils is vital at this stage if we all work together and there's a bit of funding on the table I'm really confident we can deliver a lot of the activation of those outdoor spaces across New South Wales
thank you James
I would just add that it's worth remembering that you know pre the spike in Victoria we were working to a very different timescale and trajectory and and I think we all hoped and perhaps anticipated that by this time of the year we would have you know larger public gatherings we would be able to have more face-to-face activities and obviously what's happened in Victoria has sent us back to quite a degree I think there is an element of urgency around this there's a recognition that there will be a sort of cliff edge if Jobkeeper ends in March and there'll be a lot of businesses particularly within the experience and entertainment sector that will be hit very hard by that so there is a need to create more business opportunities in the lead up to that to that deadline I think you have seen quite a lot of activity from government over the last couple of weeks you've got some prominent ministers who are making the right noises but absolutely the more we can do as we go into the summer period the better
thank you thank you both and finally last question from me in relation to the nighttime strategy what the government has announced in the last few weeks in response to covid and the impact on your industries what what oh sorry on the nighttime economy industries what are there any gaps within what the government is proposing to do any regulatory gaps particularly that you think need addressing that the government isn't responding to or could perhaps be responding to better or sooner
I'm happy to speak first on that briefly look I do think that the government has listened and identified some of the listen to some of the regulatory gaps that councils have identified so you know for example we have been talking to the state government about trying to identify for example where a cafe has potentially an old consent that only allows it to open till 8pm and they would in order to sort of get an extension of those hours they need to go to the council and seek an individual approval and the City of Sydney's changed our planning controls so that we now encourage people always to apply for the maximum even if they aren't indicating at this stage of the business cycle they're not going to use it but we do need an easy mechanism to try to convert everybody to those longer opening hours in zones where it's appropriate again the City of Sydney's done a lot of hard work to identify where those zones are that's appropriate but we sort of need the bulk change to get those hours converted because otherwise we'd have to do individual VAs for all of those so we're definitely working with the state government on some of those zoning and planning changes I think it's also important on the flip side though to make sure that there is appropriate regulation to keep spaces safe and usable so we have seen some deregulation programmes and here I highlight the 24 hour loading of supermarkets which was introduced over the top of capital powers during covid whilst that was appropriate for an emergency situation where we were seeing stocking of supermarket shelves being a problem we now are starting to hear a lot of community concern about that about the noise about the loading hours and that makes places dysfunctional so we need to get the balance right of deregulation where it's appropriate and in the public good and in the community interest and retains community confidence in those spaces but not a one size fits all approach that will disadvantage some places and lead to a lack of community confidence and indeed community anger in the use of commercialisation of those spaces and I guess it's why we would also caution the New South Wales government from removing powers about outdoor dining from councils this can lead to really disproportionate levels of anger when that space is not used cleanly in a way that's healthy where social distancing is maintained the noise levels are appropriate and you know it can be done in the public interest
that's very useful thanks Linda
James
and I suppose just add that by saying it's obvious that the 24 hour economy strategy will have to evolve in response to the pandemic it's a piece of work that you know began 18 months ago and a lot of the thinking that went into it was done pre covid and we think it's a really robust strategy but it's obvious that it will have to pivot in certain ways as given the economic impact of the pandemic I think the the role of the coordinator general will be really important from a regulatory perspective we have argued that you need to have a central figure within governments who is responsible for the 24 hour economy but also to act as a champion for the sector but also as somebody who the sector can go to if they have problems with with regulation or or other things and ideally troubleshoot things before they become an issue one of the challenges with regulation in this space previously has been there hasn't really been one advocate within government within a department to really to take on areas where regulation isn't working so we really hope that whoever's in that role will be able to ensure that problems are fixed before they become really cumbersome on on industry but certainly it's this is the kind of strategy that can't just sit on a shelf and gather dust it has to develop and bend as the impact of the pandemic becomes clearer
Chair can I just add one more quick suggestion on that one we also would like to see planning reforms in consultation with the local government to the National Construction Code to for example allow temporary use of all types of businesses and buildings for small scale arts and cultural offerings essential to keep the sector practising so for example you know pop-up spaces where safe in you know warehouses or things like that we need some changes to the National Construction Code on that to get those activations be made legal and possible
Matthew Mason Cox
yes look thank you both for joining us I just had a couple of questions I wanted to ask you about well some of the feedback we've received in relation to the consistency of the regulations in relation to covid the four square metre rule the fact that at some venues you can have for example 300 people at a club you can have 100 people at a wedding reception 150 people at a wedding reception 100 people at a place of worship 500 people at a non-ticketed event and we go on and on corporate events for 150 people do you have a view in relation to the need for consistency and also a pathway to easing of restrictions particularly the four square metre rule perhaps moving to a two square metre rule and trying to get some consistency across the board I just like your view in in that regard
Chair happy to kick off again Matthew thanks for the question look I mean we are I guess as councils not going to argue for anything really that is against what the state government is trying to do with respect to the health orders we very much understand that our place is to do all we can and we work with the state government to ensure that those health orders are complied with and people are behaving safely so I guess we we wouldn't be able to comment on a way out of the health orders rather though what we'd like to see is a state government funded campaign about how to work within them so that we can safely keep these spaces open and again whether that's a campaign about the beaches our parks or our open spaces more generally you know councils are working very closely with police police are telling us you know that they are working hard but cannot possibly for example resource the policing of all our beaches open all the time you know there have been some local conversations where local police are sometimes suggesting to councils they should be closing their speech closing their beaches in anticipation of crowds none of us want that none of us want to see beaches closed none of us want to see open spaces closed because they're overcrowded and as I said it's why I've written to the Premier on behalf of councils to ask for that public education campaigns and covid marshals generally though on consistency I mean I think we have to recognise that places are different and you know the kinds of social distancing we we might need to see Walgar is very different from what we might need to see in my part of the world in the City of Sydney of Sydney. So I think, again, you know, allowing councils that local decision-making about how outdoor dining or how a pop-up creative spaces occur gives us the benefit of maximizing those opportunities in places where there haven't been any cases for a long time and it's much safer to do so.
Okay, thanks.
James, did you have a view about that, the benefits of consistency?
Yeah, it's, it is an obvious challenge to, not only maintain consistency across different-sized venues, but also with changing circumstances. And, you know, to go back to the point I made earlier, I think we were on a journey where we were looking at, you know, potentially removing the one-person-per-four-square-meter rule prior to the spike in Victoria. And I think had the spike in Victoria not occurred, we would be in a much better position by this time of the year. And I think it's also worth noting the challenges that, obviously, different states have different arrangements. And I think from a consumer perspective and from an operator perspective, sometimes there can be an element of confusion about which rules apply to where. The one thing that we hear a lot from businesses, from operators, is they just want a sense of the direction and a sort of roadmap for where government wants to go. And government has done some really important work in some areas around this, particularly around things like business events. But I suppose, you know, the one thing we would be looking for government to continue and potentially do more of is just to give people that certainty of this is the place we want to be in one month's time, in three months' time, appreciating that it is really challenging to make those kind of predictions. But I think that would help enormously in allowing businesses to that certainty, plus obviously encouraging and making it easier to operate outdoors, which will make a huge difference to, you know, particularly small bars, small cafes, and the smaller operators that might not have space to operate for many people within the current regulations.
Thanks. I just have a quick question to you, Lynda, in terms of the outdoor dining. Is it, is it the view of at least some councils that a sort of broad permissive planning change to enable councils en masse to extend night time dining hours is the preferable way forward, rather than individual DAs? Are you looking for a change to like a DCP or an LEP?
I think that it would be helpful if, yes, the power could be extended to councils to have that broad change rather than having to do individual DA by DA. But I also stress that that power must rest with local governments because in having one rule for Martin Place and the same rule applying to, you know, Wogga, it's just not going to make sense. And so local governments can bring that local knowledge to best activate local spaces that brings along community confidence and also allows for the commercial use of these spaces. But a change to enable councils, I guess, to do bulk permissions, to upgrade people, to allow them the maximum hours without having to do individual applications would be a very useful thing to do. And again, we know, we want our local businesses to succeed, we want people to be able to use our outdoor spaces and not have them so overcrowded that they have to be shut down. So we really want to work very closely with police and the state government agencies to ensure this can happen, but it's very tough to do that. We know, you know, it's going to be tough for the police and their resources. Councillors do not have the resources to have marshals everywhere, so it is very, you know, big damage.
Yeah, so you see both the funding for marshals and that empowering of councils going hand in hand and those two things having to come together.
Correct.
Could I just ask you again about, and this is to both of you, and I might start with you, James. In terms of activating places like beaches and public parks to allow live entertainment, do you believe that also is going to require some planning changes to provide a discretionary permission to be given by councils? Is that how you see that going forward, James?
I would, I would certainly say in some parks in particular, that would require some regulatory reforms or tweaks. I have to say, I am not in a position to talk too specifically about particular areas, but I'm happy to take that question on notice and come back with a more detailed response. But certainly, we would, we would very much encourage the use of parks, beaches, of other large open spaces, particularly the things like live performance, which is an enormous opportunity over the next few months.
But before I go to Lynda, do you agree though, given just how diverse our cities and our state is, that rather than a one-size-fits-all state regime, that giving that kind of permissive powers to councils who can then look at the localities more closely would be the preferred model?
Yeah, I can see the merits in allowing that flexibility. You know, certainly there are differences between some of the challenges faced by operators within the Sydney CBD or in Parramatta and regional areas. So I think it's absolutely something that's worth looking at.
Lynda? Lynda, did you have a view about, about that as a regime?
Yeah, I mean, look, as I said, I think it's vital that councils maintain these powers because it actually will lead to more open up in spaces where it's appropriate. What we wouldn't like to see is a one-size-fits-all rule that, you know, might lead to public anger in spaces where it's not appropriate and a one-size-fits-all rule, you know, that would cause community consternation where it doesn't need to be the case. So, yeah, we think these powers should continue to lie with councils. Councillors are very motivated to open up their public spaces and do it, you know, safely and in the public interest.
All right. The final question, we're running out of time, but I'll go to the honourable Trevor Khan.
Lynda, I get what you're saying, but what I'm interested in is this, particularly in the light of some events that have occurred in the United States. I think there was some sort of, I think it was some sort of motorcycle rally or something that's now been linked to hundreds of thousands of cases that have sprung from that one event. Do you think there's, if the, if the power and decision-making is devolved to councils, is there any potential legal implication for councils if in fact, an event proceeds and then becomes the source of a major outbreak?
Thanks for the question, Trevor. I'm unfortunately not familiar with that example of the motorbike rally in the US, but more generally, this council, this power does already rest with councils. Councillors are already, you know, approving outdoor dining and a range of permissions for outdoor events. And we've been, again, working very closely since 2016 in a very collaborative way across local government areas to try and activate our spaces and open up night time economies, for example. So this just really is a continuation of the current powers that exist. Of course, we are absolutely aware of the risks legal, but also actually just for people's health and we want to not see an outbreak anywhere. And that's why we're working so hard to ensure that there's the balance of appropriate regulation to ensure that people are safe, combined with regulation to enable as much of the use of our outdoor space is as possible and safe and in the public interest. So again, I think allowing councils to keep those powers, allowing them to use their skills and expertise to balance and weigh up all those different objectives for the use of public space is the best way forward. There's no doubt though, COVID has brought forward funding pressures for achieving those plans, you know, councils are now working very hard, for example, to make sure their beaches have COVID-safe plans, et cetera. So there's no doubt that work that has always been done by councils has a whole lot of new funding pressures and constraints and is much more difficult. Nevertheless, we are very motivated to do it and make sure that our, you know, public and open spaces can thrive.
We have run out of time, but Lynda, if you wanted to take the opportunity to have a look at whether or not the existing Good Faith Defence in the Local Government Act will be sufficient to protect councils?
Happy to take that on notice.
Maybe take that on notice.
Thank you.
Thank you both. I think you both have taken a couple of questions on notice and I'd just remind you, there's a 21-day time period in which to provide those answers. Feel free to provide them within 21 days, don't feel necessary to wait 21 days. But I thank you both for your participation in the hearing today.
Thank you.